Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for November 12, 2024. Clerk Cameron, please call the roll.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Present.
Herbie.
Here.
Joyder.
Here.
Garamis, absent. Ho.
Present.
Chanko.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hayho.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park, here. Udara.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Has anyone signed in for public comment this evening?
Nobody's signed in.
All right. And is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment that did not have an opportunity to do so? If so, please raise your hand. It includes nobody at the front table. All right. We will move on then to business before the committee, which is our continued review of the fiscal year 2025 budget. Before we do that, I did want to mention that we had a visit today in Elmers and both to the university and to our city from delegation from Mongolia. And Alderman Bastido, thank you for hosting them. I expect you'll have dual citizenship before the year is over. City manager, do you have any comments you'd like to make before we move into the budget?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. So in addition to the typical or usual budget materials, we did post a draft circle back list on board docs. So take a look at that. If we misinterpreted your circle back, please let us know as soon as possible. We anticipate getting to those next week, and we are working on replies to all of them. We will have a memo posted prior to next week.
All right. So traditionally, we would then, there might be some written responses on the circle back memo. So then when we get to the alderman's, any alderman's specific concern, you may see an answer and you can indicate if that is sufficient or if you want further discussion on that circle back. All right. Thank you. Then we will start with the library. So we'll be on section three dash two. And city manager, if you want to take it from there.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have with us the executive director from the library and the board president from the library. So I will turn the microphone over to them.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Levin and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Marcia Baker, President of the Library Board, and with me tonight is our library director, Mary Beth Harper. Our public library is much more than just a building filled with books. It is a vibrant community hub that provides essential services to people of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances. The library serves as a gateway to knowledge, creativity, and personal growth. Each year, we present our budget to the city council to give you an overview for the upcoming year. As we mentioned last year, the library continues to save for building maintenance and upkeep, including a planned transfer of $150,000 to the capital replacement fund. In the 2024 budget year, we completed several building-related projects, such as replacing the last of the original carpet, updating more light fixtures with energy-efficient LED lights, and replacing our main server. We are also in the process of replacing four sump pumps in the basement that are 21 years old and looking pretty ragged. The upkeep and maintenance of our building is a priority in budget planning because our building is aging, and we want to stay ahead of any issues. To this end, our facility staff constantly is monitoring the state of the building. An extensive review of the building's structure and mechanicals was completed in 2020 as part of this process. And with this planning, we feel confident we will be able to keep the building a welcoming and accessible environment for our community. One of the largest portions of our budget is dedicated to materials, including books, eBooks, databases, and extraordinary things. This year, we are allocating $900,000 to ensure we continue offering a wide range of physical and digital materials for all patrons, including the littlest readers who require assistance. In response to the rise in digital usage, we are also increasing our investment in e-resources to meet the growing demand while also maintaining a strong physical collection for those who prefer traditional formats. As stated above, the library is a hub for lifelong learning, and a significant part of our budget is also dedicated to programs that serve our community. From storytimes for children to creative and engaging programs for adults, these programs foster community engagement and offer a shared experience of learning together. Coming up this year, we are excited to announce a patio enhancement project, which will feature comfortable furniture with shade, an expanded area for patrons to gather and relax, and sensory play elements for children. If you haven't seen it, the patio is located on the south side of the building, adjacent to Wilder Park, and is underutilized due to a lack of furniture and shade. The planned improvements aim to make the outdoor space even more inviting and accessible extension of our library. Our library building was originally designed to merge the outside with the building interior. The patio enhancement will continue that concept and support family-friendly experiences. Through all of these accomplishments and plans, we remain committed to being responsible stewards of public funds and take that responsibility very seriously. This year's budget does not propose an increase to the levy from last year while maintaining an excellent level of service. As you have heard in past buzzet presentations, we evaluate our budget annually and assess our reserves to determine the need for any modest levy increases. In closing, we would like to extend our thanks to each of you for your steadfast support of the library. The library is truly a reflection of this community's dedication to lifelong learning, inclusivity, and shared growth. Thank you for helping us to serve our patrons and for believing in the power of a vibrant public library. We look forward to continuing our work together to make a positive impact for all. Thank you very much. So I'm ready for any questions.
All right. We will open it up to discussion from the dais. Alderman Hill, himself a librarian. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Love to ask a question to the library every time. I make sure, even if I don't have one, I make something up. This is a real question, but perhaps a circle back item. Speaking of capital improvements to the library, what is the estimated building lifespan for the library?
I don't think there's been a lifespan put on the building in our lifetime, first of all. But definitely the components have lifespan. So for instance, the sump pumps that we're replacing today are 21 years old, and the work is being done right now this week. And pulling the sump pumps out, and they're huge, there's three very large sump pumps, or four actually, very corroded, ready to be replaced. The roof is, I believe, a 40-year lifespan. The HVAC system, which is of course very complex, is more like a 30-year lifespan, 25 to 30 years. So we'll be approaching that within the next couple of years. So those are some of the big, major components as far as windows and masonry and things like that. I think that's probably a lot longer of a lifespan. I don't have the engineering study with me right now, but we did do a full detailed engineering study in 2020 where they did evaluate all of the parts and components of the building and told us when we could expect to make some major investment in repairs and replacements.
Thank you.
So I suppose if I wanted that, I could get that offline.
Yeah. No, it's not online, but I can certainly give it to you. It's quite a huge document full of all kinds of different pieces.
I can't wait to tear into it, but no, thank you.
But I'd be more than happy to let you see it, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Just an interesting thing to note, too, in our saving of putting money into the special reserve fund. The sump pump project that I'm talking about, we had originally budgeted $25,000, and it costs costing us $84,000. So, you know, costs are up everywhere with repairs. And I think once these repairs and replacements will need to be made, we're really saving to make sure we have enough money to realize all those in the future.
Thank you. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. So post-COVID, you know, so many sectors, industries have struggled with, you know, finding people that, you know, wanted to work for their, their business. Are you fully staffed, and has that been a challenge for you?
It was definitely a challenge the first couple of years after COVID. I am now noticing a big difference in applicants when we have someone who leaves the organization. We're now getting sometimes 25 to 30 applicants again, which is fantastic. For our part-time jobs, we're getting more too. So it's much better. I mean, there was a couple of years there where it was very slim pickings, and yeah, we wondered too where we were going to get people. But I definitely see that changing and changing for the better. I think the whole work-from-home model affected a lot of us, especially those of us who can't work from home. And our main resource is welcoming people into a building and having staff there to help them. So that was, that was a shift, and I think there were a lot of people that weren't applying for jobs such as ours during that time. But I see that definitely going away, and we're once again being able to choose between candidates and have really decent candidates apply again. So definitely, I'm better.
That's good to hear. I have one other question.
So, so I'm not quite sure, maybe I'm missing this, but I'm curious with respect to your, you know, operating funds. Grant seems, you know, $67,000. That, that seems pretty small, you know, relative to, you know, dollars that the state and federal government seems to throw around. Is, are there other, you know, supplementary revenue sources that just aren't jumping out at me?
So, you know, the grant that you see there is a per-capita grant from the state of Illinois. We get that every year. It's reliable. There are other grants, museum and library grants and things like that. They are specific towards projects, though. Very specific, yeah. So it's not like there's all kinds of funding out there for us to apply for that isn't project-related. And most of the time, they are going to supplement some of the smaller libraries or less well-funded libraries, for sure, and communities that are less well-funded. We haven't applied for museum grants because we haven't necessarily needed to. But again, it's tied to big projects, usually.
Projects, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a sister-in-law who is, their Catholic school in Chicago is diminishing or closing, and they're looking to move. And they have grade-school-age girls. And they have grade-school-age girls. And they came this weekend, and they lived at the library. They did the Makery, they did talking to the dogs. It's, it made our weekend. It is something that, I don't know one building that is an Elmhurst asset like the library is. We were showing off a new field school to try to woo their parents to come to Elmhurst to stay. All they talked about was the library. So you are no sleepy backwaters. Elmhurst money is well-spent. Thank you to you and to the board.
Thank you so much. It's great to hear that.
I didn't hear five-star in there anywhere. Is that?
They took away that rating. So they're not doing it anymore, which I think is kind of nice.
I hereby bestow upon you five stars.
You can just, we'll take it.
You've got it back now. All right.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram?
I'll just follow up with that. I echo Alderman Nardini's compliments to the board, to the staff of the library. One of the things I said last year is regarding, I made a promise, I think, on the dais, saying that I was going to visit the Makery. I did keep my promise. I didn't do anything fancy. I just did some laser etching on some glasses. But I did keep my promise. I am interested in going back. So just keep up the good work that the staff, as well as the board, is doing. So kudos to all.
Thank you so much. The Makery is quite a community resource, and we're actually looking into possibly extending some of the hours to be open a little bit longer because it has been so popular. So, thank you.
Alderman Brennan?
Let the record show that after Alderman Bram attended the Makery, the etcher was out of commission, so.
Not true.
Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the library staff and all you do. I echo everyone who's made the positive comment. I think it's probably our largest shining star in Elmhurst is the library. I can't think of anything where, when I talk to people, we hear it over and over, that the library is the crown jewel. And I don't think that's, and that brings me into my discussion of my question. I'm a little bit concerned about watching the fund balance diminish. From 2023, we're at 5-point, let's call it 5.5 rounded, and now we're at 4.9. What makes me worry there is when you talk about your capital budget or your depreciation expense on the building, and you're allocating, you have $150,000 over on page 3 dot whatever eight of the capital fund. It seems like since we're seeing the, if we look at the capital number, 585 proposed for 2025, I'm going to guess you're going to end up hitting that number consistently at the half-million number for the life of this building. And I think it'll only grow. Again, I'm, this is crystal ball talk. But I think that's important that, I think I mentioned this last year in budget, that I want to see that balance grow so that you guys have enough money to cover X percent of your capital budget. I see that building lasting more than 40 years. It could last 100 years, I hope. But it's not going to last by not spending that half a million or X dollars per year. And so I don't quite see enough money going to that line item in the budget. And so I'm watching the 585 show up, and I see that's going to be, I predict that's going to be a common number. So I just want to get your feedback on, what percentage of debt are you guys willing to accept for a future building or for future major capital improvements to that building? With staying in your footprint, I don't see us moving that footprint anywhere because it's such a crown jewel. So can you comment on those two facets of capital improvement dollars and the reduction in the fund balance end of year?
Yeah, so the fund balance in the budget is basically, we'd like to carry six months' reserves in there. And that's because we have that period between January and June when our first tax payment is received, where we work off of our reserves. So that is a different fund balance than what we carry in our Special Reserve or Capital Replacement Fund, which is basically for all those capital repairs and improvements. So we are spending down the fund balance in the operating fund a little bit to do a project. The $500,000 there is specifically earmarked for the patio improvement project. I don't think it's going to come in that much. The other line that you see above that is in our building line.
Mary Beth, would you tell us, when you're referring to what page or line you're on?
Yeah, sorry, that's 3, so 3-5. If you look under Capital Outlay and Building Improvement, under 570-100, that $500,000 is earmarked for the project that we talked about, which is the patio improvement project. And then when you go up above to our building line, which is in, why am I not seeing that one? Building Maintenance, sorry, Building Maintenance, which is above under Services. Yeah, that is 531190, and there's $330,000 there. So that is basically all the repair and maintenance for this year's building projects that we have deemed necessary. That is the line that you will see increasing probably each year with some of these different projects we have going. So we did spend down, we plan to spend down a little bit of the reserves in this, but we'll still have above that 50% in the reserve fund, okay? And then in our, if you go onto page 37, that's our Capital Replacement Fund. And within that, that's where we have been making for the past couple of years a $250,000 transfer. But for this year and next year, I'm going to plan a $150,000 transfer because we are accumulating a good amount of money in there. I think it is money that is good to accumulate because, as I said, we are going to have these repairs and maintenance, and that might have to switch back to more money in the future. But this fund is the fund that can fund all of our repairs and maintenance coming up, and we can keep that money in there as a savings. Now, I do not, I do not, under my leadership here, ever hope to go back out for more debt. You know, we've just paid off all of our debt. We have a building that is a great size for the community we live in. We know our community is not going to expand much more because we're pretty much landlocked here and built. So our library is incredibly sufficient for the community we serve. In fact, it's big, which is wonderful. But we do get a lot of uses, usage. We're a very well-used library. So I don't see us ever needing, that I can think of, a larger building or a branch or anything like that because our community is also very compact, shall we say? We don't have huge geographical region either. So we're doing really well as far as that. Now what we have to do is just make sure that, like you said, Rex, that we're improving and keeping up with the facility that we do have. And I have to say, it is in great shape for 21 years. I mean, it really is. We are going to see these repairs. We are going to see a lot more maintenance. I have been funding that building line more, and I have the plans to fund it more as we see more repairs and maintenance. We did have the capital improvement study done, and everything we're doing here, we're saving money and putting away, is planned for that, those capital replacements, okay?
Yeah, thank you. 3.7 is, I think, the answer to my concerns.
Yes, that's where we have a lot of that money. And remember, this money in this fund can only be used for repairs, replacement, erecting a new building. It can't be used on salaries. It can't be used to buy books unless I was building a new building and I needed books to furnish in the new building. But that is strictly tied to capital improvement projects, our maintenance and repairs, okay?
All right, other questions, comments? All right, so some have already said it. We're all very proud of the library. Thank you for coming out. I think it helps when we get to dig into the budget a little bit. It helps us understand where the library is going and its continued good stewardship. So I think we'll excuse you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to say, you know, the reason the library in this town does so well is because we have such great community support, and we have such great support from our city. I sit on, sit in meetings with other city library directors, and it's not always like that. So thank you so much because you've made our job easy, and thank you. Thanks, good to see you, too.
I will invite Assistant City Manager Johnson back to the table. When we ended our last session, Mayor, we had gotten through the IT budget, but I think we're going to allow some time for questions tonight. If there were additional questions, that's page 2-26.
All right, 2-26, any additional questions for IT? Okay, I think not. We'll move on to legal.
Very good. Then I'll ask you to turn to page 2-29, which is the Legal Services Budget. A couple of things that I'll point out in here and are spelled out on the J form. We have increased the amount for Labor Council. We're currently in negotiations with the FOP for the police contract. Next year, we will be in negotiations for the fire union contract. And then shortly after that is the Public Works Contract. So we've increased the amount that we think we will need. And then the second item is legal fees. We did add $100,000 to that in anticipation of needing special counsel or possibly a lobbyist for working on our train station and working with UP Railroad.
And we should point out, that is not additional money for Starino Romello. That's for special counsel, who would have a particular expertise in railroad law if we need it.
That is correct. Thank you. Happy to answer any other question, and any questions that might be out there.
I think I would just say, because I've looked, we've looked at this through Chair Tulu and the Finance Committee. I just think it's worth noting that we are a town that has a lot of demands for legal services, some generated from within the council, some generated from the residents, some because of the amount of development that we've been doing. But I would say I'm very pleased with our legal council and what work they have done for us. I feel it's always been timely. And as we've looked at some of the litigation we've done, we've gotten some excellent results. A little commentary, but anyone else want to ask questions? Go ahead. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor, again. A quick question. Is there any interdepartmental charges for legal back to other departments like IT? I know they're only, we're coming up on a million, you know, 908, and they're at 3-point, I'm just doing it from memory, 3.2. So it's not a huge number. But is there a thought of ever pushing special projects where, you know, that we've got 200 hours of legal and push it over to, you know, an enterprise or a non-general, anything like along those concepts?
So there are times, if there is a legal expense specific to, for example, the MUF or a TIF project, then those legal fees do get charged to those funds. But there is no departmental allocation where we allocate out the general fund expense to other departments in the general fund. But if there is another fund that does use legal services, we will charge it to that fund.
All right, additional questions? Move on then to claims. And that's page 231.
Okay, claims is page 2-31. And this just represents the claims that the city would pay out on behalf of, you know, whether it would be deductibles or settlements that the city has. So the 2025 proposed budget is just based on an average of claims from 2022 to 2024 estimated. And that's how we come up with that amount. They fluctuate year to year based upon what happens.
And to remind the council, we have a self-insured retention where we pay up to a certain amount before insurance policy would kick in, which is what this line would reflect. Discussion? All right.
Thank you. The next item is page 2-33, Public Health. And that has two items in it. First is the ambulance service. That's the contract with Metro Paramedics. And that contract goes through 2027. And then the mosquito abatement speaks for itself. That's a contracted service that we have each year.
Discussion?
All right. Next item is 2-34, Human Services. That contains a number of accounts. It has, as you can see, the Youth Commission, then a number of senior citizen programs. In that, we have the Senior Citizens Commission, which is miscellaneous expenses for what the commission wants to carry out. And in addition to that, this year, we did some printing, which came out of our communications budget. And that was for the pocket pal that was mailed out to seniors in the community. The Senior Assistance Program is the Metropolitan Family Services Contract. The seniors taxi subsidy has been wildly popular since we turned to the PACE Taxi Uber program that they've put in place. It's been incredibly popular. And then the Senior Citizens Council Grant is to the Due-Paged Senior Citizens Council for the Meals on Wheels program. Happy to answer any questions.
Discussion? Alderman Nardini?
Thank you. How does the taxi subsidy work?
There are, it's laid out by PACE in partnership with Uber or other third-party rideshare companies. And there's a certain dollar amount that residents can use per day. I don't have those numbers offhand, but we can get those to you. And so it's, I think the first $2 is paid for, or $2 is the rider's responsibility. And then there's a cap after that. I want to say it's $25, but again, we'll get to those numbers each day, as I understand it.
The reason I'm asking is, is there like a moment in the year that it would end, meaning we have spent our total amount of taxi assistance?
Well, I think that's why we've shown an increase in 2025, because it is very popular and getting very close to that cap that we have in the budget.
Well, in fact, we went over $25,000 almost.
Oh, right, yes, showing this year.
So we don't cut people off.
Yeah.
You can't get home, sorry, we're out of money. You know, we don't do that.
Thanks, understood.
All right, additional questions, discussion? Thank you, City Manager. We'll go on to the next item.
The next item on page 2-36 is the Finance Budget. I will, I will say that this is a status quo budget for the Finance Department. Some projects that we have on our plate as we move into 2025. The first is completion of the ERP. The last phase, which is the utility billing phase, should go live at the, hopefully at the beginning part of 2025. We are continuing to work on integration of other systems, so integration of the police and fire payroll systems into our ERP system. And again, continuing to improve all processes and internal controls as we use these new systems. We continue to receive and apply for the GFOA awards for the budget and for the annual report that we prepare. And we will continue to do so moving forward. As I noted, there are really no major shifts in the 2025 budget. The total budget is actually decreasing from the 2024 amount. But I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Could you highlight why the banking expense has dropped significantly?
So one of the advantages of the new ERP system is we partnered with their, their payment module, which has substantially better rates than our current credit card vendors. And so that is helping drive fees down. We also did make a shift in July of last year to the WaterSmart portal, where residents were paying through that portal versus the old click-to gov model. And that also resulted in additional credit card fee savings. So we continue just to try to look at that line item and have been successful in reducing those costs.
Excellent. Discussion from the council? Alderman Nardini?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The, this year, 2024, the wages and the health insurance that were budgeted and estimated, is that something where it was paid in a different fund? Or did we decrease full-time or part-time employees?
So the wages is really a shift. If you look down in the contract staffing, we continue to use a contract staff in our payroll department for a portion of the year. We had budgeted for that staff to be a full-time staff member for the entire of 2024, but that shift was made, actually, just within the last month. So that shifted costs from kind of below the wage line up above.
And how many full-time and part-time employees do we have in Finance?
So we currently have two part-time employees in the front office. And we have, and now I'm going to have to do a seat count, 11 full-time employees.
Thanks.
City Treasurer?
Back to banking expenses for a moment. We can additionally reduce that number if...
We can additionally reduce that number if we encourage folks to set up auto pay. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
So auto pay is by far the cheapest option. And that's where we would directly debit someone's checking account. That's the cheapest option for someone to pay their utility bill with the city. So driving participation in that helps reduce fees from when someone would use a credit card. That's really the most expensive way that someone can pay a bill with the city.
Actually, I know we've shifted from credit card a lot to e-check option on our, on my own, my company's website. Is that something that we have?
We do do e-check now on some of the, actually, we do do e-check on the WaterSmart Portal. Sorry, I was trying to remember that. We do that for, that is a little cheaper than credit card. It's still not as cheap as the direct debit, but that does have a little bit of savings from the credit card.
Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Will we, when we fully move our new payment system and move everything there, can we set up auto pay for water bills, for example?
With the new system?
Yeah.
Yes. So with the new system, you will be able to set up auto pay. You also can, with the current WaterSmart system as well, you can set up an auto pay. We do plan on at least keeping the payment system within the WaterSmart to continue that through a portion of time when we implement the new option, just to kind of slowly phase folks to the, to the new system.
How would you set up auto pay now?
So you can go into the WaterSmart system. And then there's a way, when you go through the payment, to set up a recurring payment. And you can do that either on your credit card or, I believe, in e-check as well.
Thank you.
All right, any other? Well, let me say, on behalf of the council, because I talk to them from time to time, everyone is very impressed by how our Finance Department is run. We had a major changeover in terms of our director and assistant director a couple of years back. And I would like to say things are going very well, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, City Manager.
I will leave it with Christina. She's doing such a great job, so.
All right, continue. My moment's not over yet. Go ahead.
So next, we'll move on to the Capital Improvement Fund. And I'm just going to ask you to turn to page 2-77. If you have a, if you have a moment to, the Transmittal Letter does a nice job of explaining how our Capital Improvement Fund works. So our Capital Improvement Fund collects dollars to pay for capital projects and debt service, but essentially functions as a transfers fund. So it, it pulls money in. And then, as you can see on 2-77, it then transfers money out to the different funds to pay for the various items. So on page 277, it shows you where those dollars are going. So the first line is a transfer to the general fund. This is to pay for the projects in the general fund that have been identified in the CEB to be paid for by the Capital Improvement Fund. So if you do look at the number for the 2025 budget, that ties to the CEB analysis on CEB 22 and 23. Just so if you want to tie those two numbers, you can see that those work in concert together. The other transfers to the debt service fund, to the MUF and to the parking fund, those all help cover debt service in those funds. So the capital fund makes a transfer to those funds to then pay for the debt service for those. So really, this is just a fund that collects money and then transfers it out to other funds to serve the purpose. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
And I did ask for Finance Director to explain some of these funds, because if you, even if you've been around for a while, it gets a little confusing to what these are. So I appreciate that.
Of course.
All right, back to you.
All right, next one is page 4-17, under the Enterprise Fund. And this is the Parking Fund. And actually, I will ask you to go to page 4-20 and 4-21 are where the expense line items live. This Parking Fund, we did an extensive review of the Parking Fund with the Finance Committee that then resulted in a report to City Council this year. And this budget that we prepared does bear all of the hallmarks of that financial review that was conducted this year. So a couple, a couple shifts that you will note that were addressed in that review. The parking repair, parking deck repair program that is lined 531110. And then also the capital outlay item, 570800. Those were two items that we identified that were moved to the Downtown TIF or TIF 6 to be able to have that fund pay for those line items to then help the Parking Fund to be self-sustaining. Another hallmark of that was looking at having only one parking service officer in the budget. So you will look at the salary line item. We have consistently throughout 22, 23, and 24, only had one parking service officer. But we had been budgeting for a second one with the hopes that if the Parking Fund revenues increased, that we could potentially add that. The financial review that we conducted kind of said to stay at one for now. So that's what's included in the 2025 budget. There was one J form for software maintenance. It notes our Flowbird software. I just wanted to note that that is not a new program. That's just increased usage. Again, we've seen parking increase. We certainly still aren't back to the pre-pandemic levels. But as some of the patrons return to park, that does continue to drive up some of our costs to handle those transactions. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them that the council may have.
Alderman Herbie.
On the Parking System Fund, Enterprise 530, do you, do we have a balance in here anywhere that shows ending balances for 530?
So that is on page 4-17, is kind of the all-in for the Parking Fund.
417?
Correct.
I jumped over, sorry.
That's okay.
Apologize for not being more informed.
No, that's fine. So this does show two bases. So the Parking Fund is an Enterprise Fund. So you'll see that the net position at the bottom is based on a full accrual basis versus our other funds that operate more closely to a cash basis. But what I did have on this page is kind of in the bottom third of the page is kind of the cash basis net position for the fund. So you can see that the result of the 2025 budget is really the first time that the, we're projecting to be in the black. The reason you'll see the big increase in the cash basis position for 2024, there will be a transfer from the General Fund to the Parking Fund to basically forgive the amount that had been loaned to the Parking Fund. And that was discussed as part of the Finance Committee review. So that's why you'll see that substantial increase. It's really just to forgive an amount that the Parking Fund owed to the General Fund, because the General Fund had been helping the Parking Fund sustain itself.
Just a quick follow-up for those not in Finance. The Parking Fund rate increase, how many months was it? I can't remember the months effective during 2024.
July 1st. It was effective July 1st.
So we had a 50% exposure to the new rate for 2024. And that's probably our biggest reason why we went to 7085.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just restate that? I think I followed you, but I want to make sure I followed you on page 4-20. 531110 Municipal Park, Municipal Parking Deck Maintenance. That was the amount, 285K, that was transferred to the TIF. That's?
Correct. So the TIF, you'll see that in the, when we get to the TIF budgets later. That's an item that's now being paid for out of TIF 6.
Okay. I thought I heard you correctly, but thank you.
Anyone else? All right, City Manager.
Moving on to the Tax Increment Financing Funds. So at the very beginning, we do have TIF 1. There is no budget for TIF 1, as we hope to expend that amount fully by the end of the year. We have a report that was passed by City Council to fund some reimbursements for the Park District. The report has gone through City Council. We hope to bring an ordinance with an intergovernmental agreement with the Park District to finalize and close out TIF 1 in 2024. If it doesn't happen in 2024, it will be the very beginning of '25. Any questions on TIF 1? Next, moving on to TIF 4, I'll direct your attention to 5-10. A note, we did add five-year projections for the TIF funds this year. That's a new feature to the 2025 budget. I will draw your attention to the Other Public Improvements line item, which is 570270, just to highlight what's budgeted for that account this year. We budgeted for special projects of $30,000. That's a typical amount we will include in the TIF for projects that may come up that we don't have identified yet contingent. We have the North York Sidewalk Project at 2.6 million. And then the engineering and construction for the Crest View Sidewalk at $443,000. Otherwise, most of the line items within TIF 4 are consistent from year to year. But I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Alderman Brennan.
So just to confirm, you said in 570270, that's where the Crest View Sidewalk?
Correct.
Is?
The other two segments are in the General Fund, but the Crest View is in TIF 4.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Hill, and then Alderman Bram.
Thank you. It's a small item, but 530240, what is City Center in the North York TIF there?
So there is a portion of TIF 4, which is in SSA 6. And so as the city's agreement with the City Center is any receipts that we receive from SSA 6, we return back to City Center to fund their operations. So they get a portion of the TIF increment or TIF receipts for TIF 4, a much smaller portion. And they also receive, you'll see the same line item in TIF 6 or the Downtown TIF as well.
And is that a longstanding agreement?
Yes.
Going back to the foundation of the TIF?
Yes, that does go back to the foundation of the TIF. And those are the properties south of North Avenue. If you turn to page, what would be, I guess, 57 with the map on it, you'll see there's on the diagram that's above, there's a small area of TIF 4 that is south of North Avenue. And that's in the City Center as well, boundary of the SSA.
So I don't know how to ask this. Is that a condition of the TIF? Is it contingent on the TIF? Because is that elective? Or what sort of agreement is it?
It is, it's a cooperative agreement that we have with City Center. And it is, it is elective.
So it's something that could be renegotiated if we would, were to decide to do that?
If we were to decide to do that, yes.
I'm just curious. I'm not, sort of want to understand it. But, and you're saying it's in one other place as well? That's not in another TIF? You said we had a similar?
TIF 6 has the same provision.
TIF 6, thank you.
Is that, is that the, on page 59410101, the property tax TIF rebate? Is that part of this? Or is that, what rebate is that?
Those are rebate TIF agreements that we have with redevelopment agreements. That's what those, those are.
Sorry, Alderman. Yeah.
So why do we do that with City Center?
So Christina can certainly explain the, exactly how it works with the, with the overlay. But that was just another funding mechanism that we, as a city, when, when the TIF was developed, decided we would share that with the City Center so that they would be able to use it for streetscape, for marketing, and events.
I guess what I'm getting at is I'm thinking about the, the area of York that encompasses much of the TIF going north of there, which could also use some potential redevelopment. And I'm just curious why those funds are redirected towards City Center. And I don't, I guess I'd like to reexamine that agreement. I'm not saying it's a bad one, but I'd like to understand more about it.
I guess the one, just two things I would add. So one of the things that a TIF can do is economic development and economic vitality. And so certainly, something like City Center that helps bring vitality to the district would qualify. You can compare, if you look at the total property tax line item on 5-9, you can see that we were projecting to get $2.2 million in TIF increment of that amount. We're only budgeting for the, for North York to give City Center $15,800. So it just gives you a magnitude of what that, that amount is that we're passing on.
When this was done, when this TIF was created, we intentionally scooped back to get what was then called the Han Street Development, which is 255, which generates a lot of the revenue. So that's really benefiting by pulling it in. That benefits the rest of North York, because it's got a significant amount that it contributes, unless I'm mistaken, that's the way I recall it.
You're correct, Mayor. And, and something else to add is when the, when that development and all the residential, the large residential developments were built, we have pulled that residential portion out of the SSA. And so that was another way to help fund City Center, because they were getting SSA dollars from those parcels when they were prior to being redeveloped. And then when they were redeveloped into residential only, they're still on the commercial, but for the other residential portion, they don't get anything now. And so that was another way to kind of make that up, so to speak.
I think you better understand it. I might have a conversation offline to make sure I'm, I'm sure I'm not understanding it correctly, so I'll do that.
Happy to do that.
Very good. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. This is pertinent to this TIF, but also a general question. There's a referral that's currently being discussed in committee that would impact budgeted dollars for this particular TIF, specifically being potentially adding lighting to the landscape medians in North York. So I don't see that, because it wasn't a thought at the time, right, in the budget. So I guess this, to me, is like a chicken and egg, what comes first? So is this something that we should at least consider putting in the budget, albeit potentially a relatively a low dollar amount of under 200,000, approximately 150,000? So does that need to be a circle back at this time? Because I would hate for that referral to potentially, not saying that it will or will not, but move forward and then have it delayed, because it's not in the budget for next year. So could one of you or both of you speak to the chicken and the egg theory here?
Sure, sure. And you're right that when the budget was put together, that referral was not established. And, and as you said, has not been decided on either. And in terms of our budget, 150 to $200,000 is a significant amount. So I would, I would say that if the council decides to add that to the budget, we'll have to figure out how that happens, whether it's additional revenue or cutting some other expenses. Otherwise, it would have to wait until the 2026 budget to be budget, to be put in.
Can I make that a circle back then?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this TIF 4? All right, we'll move on.
All right, moving on to TIF 5. First, I'd like to note, we did see a positive increase in the TIF increment in 2024. That is due to, we redeveloped the parcel in TIF 5 that now has the, the, I'm losing my words. The Distribution Center. I was going to say industrial, like that's not the right word. The Distribution Center up in that district. So that positively impacted the TIF increment in TIF 5. So I certainly want to draw attention to that. If you look at page 5-16, the roadway improvements is the industrial concrete street resurfacing. That is that $650,000 project that we have there. And then there also is the Other Public Improvement. And then there also is the Other Public Improvements of $40,000 that was pursuant to redevelopment agreement where we are to install sidewalks. So that is an estimate of the cost to install that sidewalk in that area. Otherwise, the budget is routine for TIF 5, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. On the TIF 5 map, if I remember correctly, we have a townhome development along Lake Street toward the east side of the segment here. Is there a, if I remember correctly, they got a, they got some money out of the TIF for that development project. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't remember the amount, but I was just curious. Does that help us reduce the price? If I was a person moving to Elmhurst and I was looking for a place where I could live that was, say, under $500,000 in a 1,200-square-foot townhome, and I don't know if that pricing is going to pan out, but the point is, is there a chance this could become more affordable because of the TIF dollars being applied for that project?
So that particular development is the one where I said we had the $40,000 for the sidewalk that we have budgeted. And then we did extend our water main to be able to serve that development. So that's the, really the two assistance that we provided for that development. There was no direct financial assistance that we are, we're giving to the developer.
So that would reduce the cost to the developer so that he could reduce, potentially give that back to the, either the buyer of the property or the renter of that property, depending on what model he's using?
It would depend on what his finances of his development looks like potentially, but I don't know what that, that would look like. I don't know if Manager Gorbowski wants to add anything.
Well, I mean, the whole idea behind using TIF assistance is, but for that, the project would not happen. And so that's the role that we play. I don't know that we were sure of what the price point is yet. I don't know that the developer is sure of what the price point is yet.
To be determined.
Yeah, to be determined. It's market-driven.
Thank you.
I will say two things. One is that to get the project going, there was some adjustments. You'll remember it was a larger project, and due to the concerns of density, we pared it down a bit, not really in front of the council yet, but I've had some discussions with the developer, and he's interested in, you know, whether it's possible or not to make it available to those who are already Elmhurst residents who might be looking to downsize. And we've had some preliminary discussions about how that, Mayor, I'm not tying him to it, but to make it, you know, for Elmhurst first, to make that available. I think I just repeated myself, so I must really mean it. But they are affordable. I won't say what, but the price point he's looking at, although it's substantial for other communities, would be regarded as affordable maybe for Elmhurst, but more on that later. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. I'm on page 516, line item 530256. So I'm just trying to get my head around, you know, so business grant programs. I mean, this is a line item in all the TIFs, and it seems like, you know, certain TIFs seem to have more activity around this program. You know, TIF 5 specifically, you know, looks like, on average, we're setting aside $220,000, and 2023, we're at $56,000. This year is estimated for $30,000. Refresh my memory, what, you know, what is this program about? And why are some TIFs more active than others withdrawing down this program?
That's a great question. Business Development Manager Heather Barekis certainly uses this line item as a tool to incentivize businesses to come to Elmhurst. I believe there's items like the facade grant, life safety, et cetera. I can't speak tonight why this TIF is slightly more than the others, but I do know there's a lot of redevelopment going on along the Lake Street corridor currently.
Okay. Could we add that to the circle back? I am sort of interested in how those dollars are being spent across all the TIFs. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to, I suppose I could do the research myself, but as long as you're doing a circle back, I'd like to see the budgeted amount versus the actual going back. I think it's, how long has it been budgeted? At what's the current amount, 220? And what's the actual, maybe going back a few years? Because I'd really be curious how we get the word out in that TIF. And, you know, maybe I could ask that for all the TIFs, business grants, the budgeted versus the actual going back, I don't know, three years? Yeah? Or did you mean 30? No, three. Okay, sorry. Three years. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo?
I may be just not very well-connected to what's going on in town, but I heard that the Toyota BMW dealership was sold a year or two ago to another owner. And my question is, A, is that true? And B, I assume that the deal with the prior owner regarding the TIF and the redevelopment of that property would go along with the sale and stay in full force?
Yes, that did. And I believe that went to council as well. That change in ownership was an item that came before council to change that.
I think it was before your committee.
I'm sure, yeah, before my time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. TIF 5, we'll move on.
Moving on to TIF 6. I will ask you to turn the page to, sorry, covering my finger, 5-22. So I'll highlight some of the, I'll say the more non-routine items. So the building improvement line item is continuation of the metro station project. In 2025, we just have some continued engineering dollars. You'll see the substantial construction of that project has been shifted to 2026 and 2027, and that aligns with what is in the KEB. Roadway improvements, the $70,000 that we have budgeted is for roadway engineering for Robert Palmer Drive. And then the streetscape dollars that we have budgeted are a carryover of streetscape dollars for 2024. So that was one item. If you look at the five-year plan for streetscape improvements, that was an area where the Finance Committee had recommended reducing the TIF budget to be able to absorb the cost of the parking deck repair program. You'll see that that's what is now in that 570270 line item that makes up those dollars. That's the parking deck repair program, and then the electric charging stations that are in that last line item on page 5-22.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. For streetscaping in downtown, uptown, whatever you want to call our downtown area, I thought that we were done, and we briefly discussed this at our Public Works Committee meeting once, we were done with all the pavers and streetscaping. Are we doing, are we planning on doing updates or maintenance or all of the above? Simple question is, what's left in regards to streetscaping?
I'm going to pass that to Assistant Manager Johnson.
That line item is not necessarily for adding new streetscape brick pavers in certain areas. It's more maintaining them, also purchasing things like furniture, so trash receptacles, benches. And then we also were looking at continuing on the decorative imprint that we have along York Street. So the red decorative brick look in the asphalt pavement, we were going to branch it out into other areas of this TIF. So that crosswalk, excuse me, all those items were part of that streetscape line item.
So we're adding additional benches and trash receptacles or replacing the ones that are there because we have all of the above today?
More of a replacement. And those benches are relatively expensive. I think they're in the magnitude of $3,000 to $4,000 each.
Thank you. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. I remember when downtown had a different TIF number, and the school district was, when I was on the task force for the school district, they came aggressive, or our recommendation was to come aggressively after the TIF for the downtown project to pull some properties out. Are we still in that world of the school district or the alternative jurisdictions wanting to extract specific parcels out of TIF? Were we TIF 6, right? So is that still a risk we have where they want to do that? Or do you think we have a clean sailing for the next three years, and they're not going to extract? I know that's crystal ball talk.
I feel we have a great relationship with the school district regarding all of our TIF districts. In 2018, when the, when TIF 1 was ended and TIF 6 was brought forward, we struck a deal with the school district and the park district that I thought, and for TIF 4 as well, we struck a deal which will carry forward. And there's provisions in the TIF 4 agreement where the school district gets payments each year. We just hit that mark this year. In fact, Mayor and I went over to the school board meeting and presented the check to them as the first payment of that. And so that will continue now to the end, the life of the TIF. And Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have a great relationship with the school board right now.
I don't see any danger of the kind of request that you're saying happened before happening again. The, I mean, the TIF is set, so the request to take property in or put it out is, it's already set. I think, I'm trying to think, there was someone, I think it was the old downtown TIF when we did release some properties.
Correct.
I don't know it was necessarily directly pressure from the school board.
Well, and that was a mutual agreement because then we extended the TIF another 12 years, I believe, at the time. But we released some properties so that the school district benefited from that. And so I guess in some situation, we could do that. We have a lot of redevelopment projects in the TIF that need to happen before, we would recommend doing that.
So I guess the conclusion of that is, due to that agreements that we had in 2018, the inception of this TIF, that aggressiveness of the school board was calmed. Is that a fair statement?
I think we have a great relationship with the school board right now, Alderman.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman Nardini, and then we'll see, then Alderman Hill.
Thanks. I'm on page 522, line, well, two questions. First, the city center line, 530240. What is the, what is that money broken down?
The city center line item is the same that we talked about in TIF 4. It is their portion or the SSA, where the SSA 6 overlaps with the downtown TIF. That is our agreement with them, that that amount we give to them.
Oh, that's the same that I'm asking?
Same, same item, but there's a bigger share in TIF, the downtown TIF, because there's a greater portion of SSA 6 that overlaps with the downtown TIF.
Understood.
Versus TIF 4, it's a smaller size.
The other question is sort of philosophical one. In the, in 530256, the business grant program, in TIF 5, or whatever the last one we just discussed, it was 220, but we only allocated about $30,000, and we're still staying at 220. Here, we have reduced the budgeted, the proposed budget. Why have we reduced that here? Why did we keep it in TIF 5?
That's a great question. So originally, in all TIFs, that amount was at 220 that we had. This was another one of those line items as we were looking for, how could the TIF 6 absorb some of the costs of the parking fund that were relevant? This was a line item that the Finance Committee looked at and looked at the history and said that $150,000 seemed to be the right amount, and that we would kind of continually revisit that on an annual basis. If we, we seemed to be getting more requests than that amount, that we would revisit that from businesses. But that's why that was reduced. Great question.
Thanks. Come right up the row, Alderman Hill, then Alderman Brennan.
I don't know why, but this TIF stuff is fascinating this year. So my question is, when we, when we give the money to city center, and this probably should be a circle back, I think, if anything, can we get a sense of what they do with it? Like, so what, I know it's, it's in their budget and how they decide what to do with it, but if there's a way we could get some information since that's from our lines, I'd love to know.
So that does just go to fund their annual budget, but we can certainly provide that, that to the council.
Thank you.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm on page 522, underneath the capital outlay. So I'll start at 570 triple zero. The $2 million, I think you mentioned, that's associated with the train station. Is that right? Okay. And then right below it, 570130, I'm sorry, 5700, 570100, thank you. $845,000 next year. I couldn't find a KEB on that. What is that?
It's continuation of the metro, the train station engineering.
So it's related to that? Okay. So I, okay. And then the next two are the train station itself. Last question around that. What is the current tally with respect to, you know, funds that we've secured, you know, through grants? And again, do those grants have a termination date associated with them? We've been talking about this for a long time. It's nobody's fault. There's a lot of complication that we're dealing with. But is there an expiration on the grants?
So the grants, grant funding is shown on 5-20, and the amounts in 2026 and 2027 are related to the train station. I believe there's also something else included in '26. But that's the grant funding that we have to date. We do continue to evaluate if there are other grants available. We're continuing looking for those. As far as an expiration date, I don't know if there is one or if there is. We would misunderstand that.
Yeah, they do have dates where CMAP, which is the, oversees the majority of the funds that we have, where they want to see the money being used. But we have been working with them, and thanks to CDM Smith, our engineer, who have a great relationship with CMAP folks, we were able to kind of maneuver around that. There's a portion of our grants that went on a deferred list, but they assured us before that happened that when we are ready, that they will, they will be able to shift other dollars, perhaps from other projects that are delayed or something like that, so that we have the dollars that we have been promised.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly. So on 520, I see, you know, $18 million and roughly $36 million in grants? That's all earmarked for the train station? I think all of it is, right?
You're combining '26 and '27.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not, it doesn't say 36. He's adding the two years together.
I think we go to KEB 83.
Yeah.
That has a breakdown of the grants that we have.
So 30.
About the middle of the page on the right side.
Yeah, I see it. So, okay. And what's the O? I'm sorry. FG is federal grant, right?
Correct.
And then GeoBond?
If you go to page 9-32 for grants, in the very back of your budget, that does agree out. So the 17.5 million is the metro station, and then 801,000, I actually believe is, that's not the metro station. I think that's Robert Palmer Drive. And then $40,000 is the charging station. So that's how that 18 million, of the 18 million, only 17.5 is the metro, the metro station.
Could you say that bit again?
Of the 18 million that's budgeted in the 2026 amount, only 17.5 million of that is the train station. It's other, other projects are in that amount. So I just wanted to be clear with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Brennan, to answer your question, O is the metro dollars. So if you look at the section just above, the funding sources where you were looking on KEB 83, there's CMAC, 22 million, STP, 4.1 million, ICC, 5 million, and Metro, 4 million.
Got it. Thank you.
City Treasurer.
I don't know if we call this something I found useful, but just delivering this to the rest of the crew here, our line of credit expires in October of 2025. We're currently at SOFR plus 0.72 percent, so potentially some, I'll be optimistic, potentially some interest savings as some uncertainty exists.
Woke up Alderman Toledo on this one. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. No, Dan's just, you know, making some good points there. I had a question about this grant funding. I mean, it's a significant amount of grant funding, but as everyone on, up here knows, this is a very significant project in terms of the dollar amount. I'm not saying support one way or another, Mr. Giuliani. I'm just saying, I'm just wondering, like, what hypothetically would happen if the city council decides to not move forward with a new metro station? What happens, does those grant funds just go back into a pool for reapplication for anybody? Like, what is the procedure in that case?
Yes, that's my understanding, is they would go back to the funding source for the general pool to, to use. General pool of the Chicago metro area.
Which, wherever those funds came from, whether they're federal or state.
CMAP or Metro, yes.
And is there any, like, penalties for grantor, people who have been, you know, awarded a grant and then don't move forward? Do you know, are there any ramifications for?
I don't believe there's any direct ramifications. I don't know if that's looked at in the future as you apply for grant funds for other projects.
But that's just conjecture on your part.
That is, yes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on then. Alderman Hill.
Alderman Hill. Can you refresh my memory? We, we just approved an amendment to the engineering contract for additional costs. So we have approved Phase Two Engineering already, and the amendment was subsequent to that.
Correct.
Not the reverse, right? We didn't, yes, okay. I think I understand that. So that's the only thing that's been approved on the metro contract so far, because we have a list, I'm looking at the amendment, I don't know if it's reflected in the KEB, but we've got for 2025, we've got 472,000 from Tiff six for engineering? Is that what that amount is for? That's on KEB 83.
So we adjusted that. That was the number when the KEB was completed, because I think we thought we would get through a more substantial portion of that in 2024. And so that is one number that just adjusted. If you look at page 5-22, you'll see that our estimated actual number in that 570100 is only $100,000. And so that, that cost that we thought we were going to do in 2024 got shifted into 2025. So that's why that 2025 number is 845 versus the number that's in your KEB.
So here, that's all engineering. Okay.
With the construction to be approved or?
Correct.
Decided upon in 2026.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I understand.
All right, I think we'll move on now.
Where am I going next? All right, 6-1. And if you specifically turn to 6-4, just to highlight what the debt service fund is for the city, the debt service is really an in-and-out fund for the city's governmental debt service. So you will not see included in these numbers parking fund or municipal utility fund. And so this fund really exists to collect dollars from the other funds, mostly the stormwater fund and the capital improvement fund. And then it pays the debt service on the city's bond payments. So you can see on 6-4, this is the suite of bond payments on our outstanding debt, governmental debt that we will pay in 2025. It should be noted, we do have in the budget that we will be abating all of the debt service payments in 2025. What that means is we will not be levying a property tax levy specifically to pay these debt service payments. We will be using other sources, other revenues that the city has to make those payments. So this fund is just a fund that collects from other funds, like, and then makes those debt service payments. If you want to see the parking fund and MUFC debt service payments are in those funds specifically.
Discussion? Alderman Nardini.
Can you elaborate on that abatement? I don't understand what you mean.
So when we issue debt for the city, general obligation debt, and when we, when we put that general obligation before the bond, what that means is we are using the city's full faith and credit of the property tax levy to back that debt. And so as part of the debt issuance process, when we issue a GO bond, there is an ordinance that goes to the county that directs them to levy a property tax to pay that payment absent action from the city. So if we did nothing, the city, the county would create a property tax levy of 4.55 million in 2025 to pay these debt service payments. What we do every year, and you'll see these ordinances come before, City Council at the beginning of December, is we pass what's called abatement ordinances. And what that does is that abatement process tells the county, we have other funds, we have other sources to cover these debt service payments, don't raise a tax levy for these, you know, we're going to pay it another way. And then the county does not raise the property tax levy to pay those payments. But absent our direction not to, they would.
We have generally, since the Great Recession, there was a time where we did not abate everything. But as we got back on our financial feet, we, once again, for 10 years at least, we have abated, meaning like, funded our obligation bonds through other sources of funds and raising the taxes specifically for them.
Thanks.
Other discussion? City Treasurer.
I don't know, maybe we call this things I found informative, maybe I'll share. The 6-4, first line there, 2014B, we see, we see a bit of an increase there. And that increase is just over the next few years, we have an increase in that bond payment, and then it goes back down.
Sorry, which one?
Making me say the full number, 560150, the first line. See, our 2014 payment bumps up this year for, for next year. What's that, 2025, 2026, 2027, 2028? That payment remains at that level, and then it drops back down for the remainder of the bonds. I just, I just found that to be interesting and maybe information others might find interesting.
There is in the budget summary section, there is information on our debt service payments, if that, if anyone would like to get more information on that, that is elsewhere in the budget.
Are you good? All right.
Moving on to trust and agency funds, and that's in the trust and agency tab, starting on 7-1. Just to highlight what, what these funds are and what trust and agency means for the city, these predominantly are funds that we are holding on behalf of others. So these are, for the most part, with the exception of the working cash fund, these are not our funds, but they are funds that we hold and manage for other, other individuals. So the police and fire pension funds, which are the first pages of these, the police and fire pension are governed by a separate pension board, one for the fire pension, one for the police pension, and they do oversee the finances and the payments for the police pension fund. The city does, as more of an administrative function, we do pass a budget for those funds, but those two boards do have the, the oversight of the police and fire pension. What the city controls for those two is the amount that we contribute into those funds to fund those pension funds. And we do that through an actuarial study and review that with the Finance Committee each year. And so those are on page 7-2, all the way through page 7-7. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have on, on either of those funds, but that's a high-level explanation of what those are. I guess one change that I will highlight, as you might look at these, more on the revenue side than the expense side. So there was consolidation of investments for both the police and the fire pension fund. Our fire pension consolidated, I believe, a year, two years ago. And so that is a consolidated investment fund. Those investments used to be held locally. They are now held by the statewide investment fund. The police fund will be consolidating into that fund by the end of this year. So going forward, those line items will look different because those investments will no longer be held by the local board. The local board will hold, you know, a checking account to make those annual, the monthly pension payments, but the investing will be controlled at the statewide level.
Can you, I mean, I'm sure it's critical, but the interest income kind of takes a big swing from '22 to '24. And say, you could look at it in '72, I guess, would be the place to do it, but?
So the way we budget for interest income for the police and fire pension funds, to give us a metric, is we budget for what our actuarial return is, which is 6.75% of our assets. So we use that as the benchmark budget. That way, we can tell when we have actual results, did we do better than we thought we were hoping to from an actuarial return, or did we do worse? So we don't necessarily budget based off of historical results. We budget based off that assumed return.
I see. Other discussion?
I thought someone would ask how much, what percentage we have funded our police and fire pensions as of this date?
Both are in the, like, the 60% range.
All right. All right. Anything else on this? Then we're on to interfund transfers.
Interfund transfers are on page 9-33. This is just, on page 9-33, you will just see a chart, which just gives you a one place to look to see the different transfers that we are making between funds. So a lot of these items we may have discussed throughout the budget process, or you may have seen, but what this does is puts it in one consolidated place where you can, you can see where money is moving between the different funds. And so this highlights both the 2025 interfund transfers and the 2026. And it does give, you know, at the top, the purpose of why these transfers are being made. So most, a majority of them are for debt repayment and then also for capital projects that were making those transfers.
All right. Any questions? All right. I think that brings us to the end of our list, and we will then resume next week with the circle back list. So I guess we'll just sit here until 10 o'clock. Thank you all for your time and attention. We've worked through directly, diligently, and thoroughly, so we will pick it up. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan with a motion, Alderman Nardini with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose, say nay. We're adjourned.